All right, we are ready to call our scheduled meeting to order. It's about 3:04. At this time, I think I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Maddox.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome everybody here today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. I've asked Elder Reverend Terry Lamar Price from Philadelphia Primitive Baptist Church to come give our invocation today. Reverend, the floor is yours. Everybody, please stand.
I'm praying. I find out God the supreme of all living things. We bow now with this time and place, petitioning you for wisdom and decisions this afternoon that will be made on behalf of the men and women of this county, and filtrate the minds of these elected officials to make sound decisions on behalf of your people. That the weak may become strong, the oppressed may be liberated, the marginalized may be lifted. Give clarity to every county citizen who will have the opportunity to speak today, that their vote not be prejudiced or biased but according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pleasure, allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elder Price. Mr. Chair.
I think the chairman is on his way down to present the Glenn J. Winnick Humanitarian Award with Representative from Holland and Knight, Kevin Cox, is here.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Kevin Cox at this time. Kevin and I met each other at this podium last year around this time, but I'll turn it over to him for our deserving recipient. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Kevin Cox from Holland and Knight Law Firm. This is a very special time of year for us. We recently just saw the 9/11. We, together in partnership with Leon County Government, always do a 9/11 Day of Service and Remembrance Ceremony. And in addition to filling military care packages and trying to inspire other good works, we recognize and award someone in honor of a former partner of our firm named Glenn J. Winnick. Mr. Winnick was a partner in our New York office in 2001. He was also a volunteer firefighter and emergency responder. And after he helped evacuate our office and Holland and Knight's office in downtown Manhattan that year, that day, he, instead of running north with his colleagues that he had helped evacuate, he turned south and he grabbed his medic bag and he went into the South Tower along with so many other emergency responders, firefighters, and others to try to help those. And obviously, he lost his life that day along with so many others. But at the same time, set an example for us of what it means when we're at our best. We are serving each other. We're sacrificing for each other. We're making a difference for each other. In Tallahassee, we have created an award for local community heroes each year that we recognize. We've named it after Mr. Winnick, and we are looking for those heroes, just like Mr. Winnick. But so many of our heroes that we recognize are those everyday heroes who are making a difference throughout our community. This year, we have a very special recipient. I'd like to ask Mike Long and his wife Lynn is welcome to join me too if she would like. Let me tell you just a little bit about Mike Long. Mike Long was nominated by some volunteer firefighters that he has trained from the Bradfordville Volunteer Fire Department, but he's affected many other volunteer fire departments. He's created opportunities for training that these fire departments are twice the size that they would otherwise be, and they are able to save more safely and effectively go into dangerous situations to protect the lives and the property of all of our community. He has made a difference throughout. As a firefighter himself, I talked to his colleagues who told me that he is, as long as they've ever remembered, the first one in and the last one out. If there's a structure that is in jeopardy or burning or lives at stake. I learned also that this is nothing new from Mr. Long. He was a former director of the forestry service. He's provided leadership on so many public issues. I also learned that he served in Vietnam, was a Green Beret, and a decorated veteran. So, just an extraordinary person, and we are so honored in partnership with Leon County to recognize Mr. Long today and his extraordinary contributions. I asked if he, I think he might, he's very, very, very humble, but he said he might be willing to share a couple of words. I'll let him do that, and then I would like with Chairman Jackson to present the award to him right now.
Thank you, Kevin, and I just want to say it's an extreme honor to be recognized by Holland and Knight and the Commission in their efforts to do this in memory of what I consider to be a true hero that most people don't even know about. And to receive that honor is amazing, and to have those guys even recommend me or nominate me was even more amazing. And I couldn't do what I do without dedication and sacrifices of my wife. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Very nice. Thank you.
Way in on that, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. As the chairman walks back up, Mr. Cox, I am so used to hearing you every year now. I can think of Mr. Winnick's story, and it resonates the same way every year. So, thank you and Holland and Knight for doing this. And Mr. and Mrs. Long, appreciate you being here today. Mr. Long, not many people who live within the city limits understand or haven't lived in the unincorporated area the impact of the volunteer fire department. It is huge. I grew up in a neighborhood with a VFD, and volunteers who stick around for a long time and train others are invaluable. So, I just wanted to say that, and thank you very much for your service.
Much congratulations to you again. Thank you. At this time, we will move on to our consent agenda. I will turn it over to the county administrator. Mr. Administrator, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no consent items pulled.
Consent items, or excuse me, consent items have been moved to approve, segmented by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor signify by a same aye. Aye. Oppose by the same sign, consent items, agenda passes. At this time, we will entertain public speakers. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a few speaker cards under Citizens to Be Heard Under Non-Agended Items. The first one is Melissa Villar.
As you come to the podium, just a quick reminder to give your name and address for the official record, and thank you for coming out today.
Hi there. My name is Melissa Villar, and I'm at 169 Sinclair Road. And I would like to speak to item number four, which is a move for LC SO for a trust fund, for an appropriation from the trust fund. And this trust fund is from seized assets, and $50,000 is going to charities. And I would like you to consider the holistic cannabis community as one of those charities because we will directly reinvest in communities. We felt the best way for crime and drug prevention is for access. We would use the funds to help people enter the legal market, the medical marijuana market, and to reinvest even with expungements. We're trying to help the community as a whole, and, you know, one of the ways is to reinvest in the communities, and especially if these are funds coming from seized assets. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker to be heard, administrator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The next speaker is Dr. Holyfield.
Good afternoon, Dr. Holyfield.
Good afternoon. Dr. Holyfield, Longleaf Court. If you notice, at the bottom of Section 1A, every day, the Tallahassee Democrat says, "Supporting democracy since 1905." Y'all remember saying that? Well, that is an absolute lie. The Tallahassee Democrat has not supported democracy since 1905. By and large, the Tallahassee Democrat has supported white supremacy since 1905. Now, decades ago, we fought to get the first black on the editorial board at the Tallahassee Democrat. That was Lynetta Carroll. She was not allowed to be on the editorial board until the 1990s. We met with the Democrat forming advisory committee month after month after month, and finally, they put Lynetta on the editorial board. Well, guess what? Now, the Tallahassee Democrat has gone back to an all-white editorial board. And this is not something I'm just springing on them. I spoke to Mr. Hatfield, I think his name is. I said, "What the hell are y'all doing? We fought for decades to get a black on editorial board, and now you're going back to an all-white editorial board." Ladies and gentlemen, Donald Trump is winning. And let me say, this body advertises in the Tallahassee Democrat. It's my contention that the county and the city should not submit one more paid advertisement to the Tallahassee Democrat until they get rid of their all-white editorial board. You know, this is not complicated. It ain't rocket science. They need to immediately add a black person to the editorial board, and y'all don't need to give them any more money. Not a dime, not a dime. I mean, I guess you have to fulfill your public records request, but maybe outside of that, not one more dime.
Thank you, Dr. Holyfield.
To the Tallahassee Democrat editorial board, newspaper, until they put a black person on that editorial board. And in the meantime, they need to stop that lie.
Thank you again, Dr.
In which they're saying, "They have supported democracy since 1905." Thirty seconds, because I'm going to tell you about an editorial that ran in 1957. And this was when the first white man dared to run for public office. Malcolm Johnson at the Tallahassee Democrat ran an editorial that said, quote, "Let the white man win."
Thank you.
That is not democracy, that's white supremacy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, I will remind speakers, you have three minutes. There's a warning light that goes off at the buzzer that gives you a 30-second warning, I believe, correct? And again, name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your final speaker under Citizens to Be Heard Under Non-Agended Items, Ryan Slider.
Hi, my name is Ryan Slider. I work for the Florida Forest Service. I'm the forest supervisor of Plank Road and Lake Tackman State Forest. Just a quick announcement about a meeting that we're having and give you a little bit of information of what's coming up. Recently, we have acquired a new state forest called Plank Road State Forest. This is located both in Leon and Jefferson County. I believe it's in District 1 of Leon County. To give you a better idea of where it's located, this is south of Tram Road, east of Old Plank Road, and just north of Natural Bridge Road. Recently, we've created the first-ever management plan for this forest, and a public meeting concerning this will be held on Friday, September 27. And the public meeting hearing will begin at 11:00 a.m. The location will be at the Tallahassee Forestry Center at 865 Getty Road, Tallahassee, Florida 32304. More information about this meeting can be found on the website, www.fda.gov. You can find the ten-year management plan here as well, and all you have to do is type in Plank Road State Forest into the search bar once you get into the website, and you can find it. Thank you.
On point. Commissioner Loes.
Mr. Chairman, that's quite all right. Sir, just one second. I know we don't normally engage with our speakers at this point, but because this is a media announcement from the forestry, and we have Mr. Strider, is that right?
Slider.
Slider here. May I ask him a quick question?
Sure.
Or just for information, I would love to have some information from your office. If I have the location right that you just mentioned, it is in between Tram Road and the existing gas pipeline easement, and I'm
That runs to the north of it, correct?
Yeah, just north of the pipeline easement, correct?
Yes.
Are you aware of the next era Gulf Power Transmission Line?
We've had meetings with them already.
You have? Okay, so you all are engaged in that discussion? Okay. I just, Mr. Chairman, this has been such a big issue. The location stood out. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Mr. Slider, the location of your meeting is actually in District 2. I just wanted to recognize that. But thank you for that announcement and notifying us. That's from the Commissioner of District 2. Mr. Administrator, any other speakers at this time?
There are none.
All right. Moving on to our first order of general business. Mr. Administrator, item number 16.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item comes from my office as well as Herb's, so I would invite Herb to jump in wherever appropriate. But in terms of a brief introduction, Commissioners, per your direction, on June 18, this agenda item presents a status report on the county's Adult Civil Citation Program as well as recent marijuana reform efforts. The item before you is comprehensive. However, in short, it provides an overview of the existing pre- and post-arrest programs administered by the state attorney's office here in the Second Judicial Circuit, which provides diversion and avoidance from prosecution in cases involving possession of less than 20 grams of marijuana. The Board may recall from your deliberations of the original Adult Civil Citation Program that we were among the first in the state to offer such diversion alternatives. The item goes on to include, Commissioners, what a few counties are doing since that time through the adoption of county ordinances. However, we point out that there are significant legal constraints involved there, and the ultimate authority, we point out, to prosecute these cases is vested in the state attorney's office. The item also provides a good overview of the current status of broader legal issues. I should note evolving legal issues in the landscape related to marijuana and derivative products. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
I want to, I'll start out by complimenting the comprehensive work of Andy and staff. I know that there were page after page after page of items that we have not only instituted, but I think on page 371, it talked about all of the violations that are eligible for the Civil Citation Program, and that was important as I read through the items, so I appreciate all the hard work.
I should note, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I failed to note that you have one speaker on this item.
Okay. Want to listen to our speaker first before we make comments? Sure. Go ahead.
Melissa Villar.
Hi there, thank you. Melissa Villar, Normal, Tallahassee. So, I have several notes. One, well, with the staff noted CBD generally remains a Schedule I substance under federal law, this is actually incorrect. Hemp has been removed from the Controlled Substances Act. Hemp is a genus, a strain of the cannabis plant, and all of the chemical properties, which include 400 to 500 chemical properties, are all included in that hemp. The only thing that is, right now, on the Controlled Substances list is the marijuana-derived, which is the Delta 9, which is anything over 0.3% Delta 9. So, the hemp plant, the cannabis plant, the genus hemp, the strain of the seed, and the flower, the plant itself of hemp, includes all of the properties, including, so CBD is no longer a Schedule I under federal law. So, it doesn't matter if you have zero as a distillate CBD, or you have 10, 20, 30, 40% CBD. It is no longer a controlled substance if it is included as a derivative of hemp. So, I just wanted to clarify that, but I do appreciate the very informative staff analysis and thorough with, and I must also say, there are 25, at least 25, local governments in the state of Florida since 2016. The majority occurred before December of 2016 that adopted civil ordinances for possession. So, I do want to make that clarification also. And the civil program in this area, it is discriminatory in the sense that, you know, if you're, the universities that are participants, the law enforcement agencies that are participants, they are now, you know, referring students to code of conduct, you know, so basically slap on the hand. And so, that's discriminating against other similar-aged individuals if they are based on their educational status. So, I just want to point that out, that if, and the memorandum from, you know, the district, the second, from the attorney, the state attorney in the area, you know, halting all arrests, all prosecutions, all search and seizures. But I do want to make the point that if law enforcement are going to continue to arrest, then we do need to go ahead and move forward with an ordinance. And, you know, $100 fine, it doesn't matter if you've been in possession once, it doesn't matter if you've had a felony, if you have previous charges, any person should be.
Thank you.
And we do feel it's your personal right to be in possession.
Thank you for your comments. I have in queue Commissioner Delooge and then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's worth noting, there was a note in the paper earlier this week that we were going to decriminalize marijuana. And just clearly, we don't have the latitude or the authority to decriminalize marijuana. So, what we're hoping to do here is basically make it so that less people end up in our criminal justice system, and so. Yeah. You know, we've got a problem in our country today. We got 5% of the world's population and 25% of the world's incarcerated people, something serious as long as a country alone. You know, in Leon County alone, we spend $35 million on about 1,200 inmates annually, and it's a huge number. And hopefully, we have very few people in there. But to the earlier speaker's point, there's 26 arresting agencies, I think, in Leon County, and trying to coordinate all of that so that they have some ability to manage this, but they're the front lines, they're going to make those decisions on the flies. I'd move staff's recommendation, though. I think this is a good piece of work, and I would support it.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. We'll listen to Commissioner's comments prior to voting. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I asked the county attorney, looking at page 11, under efforts to decriminalize misdemeanor marijuana possession at the local level, given that Miami, Bay County, Broward County, Orange County, Hillsborough, would it be accurate to say that the majority of Florida's population exist under standards where the local efforts to decriminalize marijuana existed, majority of Floridians have, are living in local jurisdictions that have misdemeanors and cause for the possession of 20 grams or less to be a civil offense and not a criminal offense? Is that accurate in my perception?
Commissioner, that's what those jurisdictions have decided.
And given that the majority of the citizens of Florida exist in areas where local jurisdictions have decided that it's a criminal, I'm sorry, a civil offense for 20 grams or less and not a criminal matter, how is this working out in terms of interfacing with law agencies which are abiding by the standards set by local government?
Well, I guess first, let me say, my opinion is, we cannot decriminalize marijuana in Leon County. It's a criminal act by state statute, and it's a criminal act by federal statute. You cannot make not criminal that which is criminal under the statute. So, I don't know what advice their county and city attorneys gave them, but my advice is that you can't do it. But the other problem, Commissioner, with that is, as Commissioner Delooge said, we don't have the authority to direct any law enforcement agency to do anything. And if those law enforcement agencies, whether it be FDLE, or the FSU Police Department, or LC SO, choose to not honor such an ordinance, then there's nothing we could do about that. So, there's always this twofold problem. A, can you do it? And even if you can do it, will the law enforcement agencies abide by it? And that's something we have no say-so in.
Okay. I know you are our legal advisor, and I imagine that the general councils too, the Dade County, Alachua, and all these other counties may have had your position, but nevertheless, notwithstanding the advice of their general councils, they represented the ideas of what they thought the majority of the people. It seems that it's unconstitutional, or should be in the state of Florida, where we have the majority of the citizens with local ordinances that seem to be adhered to by law enforcement. And it appears to me that the sway of the local ordinances is stronger than federal standards, stronger than state ideas about its prohibition, and therefore And that's something we have no say-so in.
Okay. I know you are our legal advisor, and I imagine that the general councils too, the Dade County, Alachua, and all these other counties may have had your position, but nevertheless, notwithstanding the advice of their general councils, they represented the ideas of what they thought the majority of the people. It seems that it's unconstitutional, or should be in the state of Florida, where we have the majority of the citizens with local ordinances that seem to be adhered to by law enforcement. And it appears to me that the sway of the local ordinances is stronger than federal standards, stronger than state ideas about its prohibition, and therefore, and just maybe because those jurisdictions may be deemed much larger, and they have larger fish to fry than what they may consider a simple marijuana violation, so it's a nuisance. But nevertheless, for those who may incur criminal records, because as we have our civil citation program, it's still a discretionary matter. And as long as the law arresting officer has a discretion with offering a civil citation, or state attorney has a discretion of offering or not offering diversion, that simply is not a constitutional standard, which sanctions inequality to all people alike or all persons arrested, then something is dreadfully wrong. I do like that staff, in its conclusion, recognizes that the legal thoughts of our attorney, which are very in step with what he's sworn to do at the bar, and as a lawyer of the Florida bar. But our staff indicates to us that the Board may wish to consider a draft ordinance that provides for civil penalties instead of criminal charges. And I believe the Board, and I appreciate the staff indicating to us that there is nothing that prohibits this body. Precedent is well-established, the majority of the people in Florida live under the status that marijuana possession of 20 grams or less is a civil citation. I think that the capital county of Florida ought be a standard bearer with what the rest of the state is trying to say. And therefore, I will offer a substitute motion that we would have our staff to draft an ordinance that provides for civil penalties instead of criminal charges for 20 grams of marijuana possession, hemp possession, and those elements that are in that family of marijuana. And I offer that as a substitute motion.
Substitute motion is on the floor at this time. Seconded by Commissioner Maddox.
Can you restate that?
Okay. The motion borrows from the language on page 12, the bottom paragraph, which, with regard to exploring a local ordinance to decriminalize misdemeanor marijuana possession, "The Board may wish to consider a draft ordinance that provides for civil penalties instead of criminal charges." My motion is, I offer that we draft an ordinance that provides for civil penalties and not criminal charges for 20 grams or less of marijuana, consistent with what you've said.
My motion has been made to, a substitute motion for option two, has been made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox.
May I speak to it again, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I in no way disrespect what the county attorney is offering, and I understand his very conservative ideas, and he's correct in his admonishments to us with respect to the federal and state standards. We get all of that. Our nation has seen prohibition, how that went, but the majority of Florida, the majority of citizens of Florida are, have deemed that this is just a civil matter. And we have that opportunity to join, not that it is against the law for us to pass our ordinance, it is not, but we are, we should be in lockstep with the direction of the present, and not be years and years behind. And I strongly encourage Commissioners, your consideration of the college town that we're in, the evolution of values and thoughts. And clearly, we can't wait on the state of Florida, our legislature, to speak for the values of our community. And I think that where we have arrived at, and where the students who come from South Florida to our community, it's just weird that young people will come here, where they're from, they're doing nothing criminal, but they come here and maybe not knowing that we're not like that, and then suddenly they're doing something criminal. This is deadly wrong. So I ask you to consider regard for the temperament of the times, and for the fairness of not marking people's lives with criminal charges, but that we would make that merely a civil reality, and that is not resting on the discretion of a law officer to determine who he wants to deem as worthy of a civil citation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, it's been said, the substitute motion, motion has been made for option two, and seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Okay, that's fine. We'll take Commissioner Deluge, and then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to make sure I understand where we're going. So, Dade County, you referenced early on, decriminalize marijuana. They can't, as the county attorney pointed out, that's a non-starter. We can't decriminalize marijuana.
They're not trying to.
Okay. I mean, they took their jail population from 8,000 to 4,000, they really had a win, and a lot of it was civil citation. So with the motion that Commissioner Proctor, the substitute option two, I want to be, I want to understand how that's going to differentiate from what we're doing today. I'm getting lost in the nuances here. Can somebody walk me through?
As best I understand, what they are endeavoring to do is to provide another alternative. So instead of, they're really not decriminalizing it, per se, they're adding a civil citation option, if you would, for the law enforcement folks to use. So we can draft that, that's not, that's not the issue. The issue that I raised secondarily with Commissioner Proctor was, we can't make anybody use it.
Right, I understand, yeah, with the law enforcement, it's their jurisdiction, but so, I get arrested, I'm a Florida State College student, Florida State Police picks me up, and I've got less than 20, I've got the pot in my pocket. What is, what's the, under today's circumstances, how do I get processed versus this? How, I'm just, I want to make sure I follow the math on this.
If you have an otherwise clean record, you're eligible for the civil citation program.
Today, as it stands?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And you would go through that process, and if you complete it successfully, then no charges are filed against you.
That I get. Okay, so what's being proposed here, though, is which?
It wouldn't make, again, what I believe that Commissioner Proctor is looking for is eliminating the, you have to have a clean record. So if you have been prosecuted five times for marijuana, and two DUIs, and shoplifting, you would still be eligible for the civil citation, unlike the current diversion program we have now. That's my understanding.
Is that, Commissioner Proctor, is that in line with where you're trying to go with this?
The county attorney has a way with words. I'm simply trying to be consistent with the majority of the state of Florida, and that when young people who come to our area, and he knows well the exact standards that would have been raised there, and I'm not going to debate with the county attorney, that someone with five DUIs and all of that, that's an extreme case. But if you're 19 years old, and you've got some marijuana, and it doesn't rise to the level of, I mean, that's a criminal record, it depends, I'm trying to take the discretion out of law enforcement. And either everybody is equal, and 20 grams or less is a civil citation, period, but just for it to be law officer's choice. Sometimes law officers think you're reaching for a gun, and you ain't.
But I'm, we can't take that.
Let me, have you, have you taken note, and I ask you, the police take note of the tenor and tone of State Attorney Jack Campbell's letter to us, which is in the back of this item. And I think that it even cites the temperament of Dade County State Attorney indicating they're not prosecuting marijuana cases. And why? Because you can't distinguish the facilities, the tests, the dogs that smell, there's no instrumentation that distinguishes between hemp, that distinguishes between marijuana, and we don't have testing labs, we don't have dogs that know the difference. And so when you have law, the law itself, saying that there's a problem here, why are we being as hard as hell, when if the law itself is saying there's no real standard that we feel comfortable by any longer? Why are we feeling so comfortable?
Mr. Administrator?
Well, I was going to clarify a bit further, but Commissioner Proctor has done a wonderful job of that, as usual, but I will just say, I didn't want it to go by at the expense of any confusion lingering there, Commissioner Deluge, as well as for the rest of the commission. These jurisdictions where, that have passed ordinance in other places, the state attorney's offices have ostensibly agreed with those jurisdictions and said, we will not prosecute our state attorney. Just to be clear, not arguing one way or another, has been emphatic that he wishes for that discretion to remain vested in his office.
All right, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dozier, you were first, then Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner, I'm sorry.
It's just fine. I just wanted to jump in before we started going around again, but I know Commissioner Lenley hasn't had a chance. And you just seconded Commissioner Maddox, so I appreciate that, the motion on the table. I'm inclined in that direction without a suitable alternative, quite frankly. I think this is an exceptionally challenging position we've been, we've brought in because of the mismatch state and federal rules that we have seen evolve over the last five, seven years. Would you agree with that, Mr. County Attorney? We've got approximately like 33 states or so that have passed some level of either medical marijuana or full recreational use. In our state, it's been medical. There likely will be amendment to the ballot next year to fully decriminalize recreational, but that doesn't do anything on the federal level. So we are in a box right now because of these various rules, and my fear is that the way we are operating, even though, which should be said, we got way out ahead of everyone else on adult civil citation. Ms. County Administrator, were we the first county in the state with an ACC program?
I think we were, and largely, the ordinances were modeled after that program.
And so that's exceptional. I don't want any of this discussion to downplay the importance of the Adult Civil Citation Program, and I'm glad the state attorney has taken that in and allowed more people to access that program, even though only 283 people have been through that program since 17. So that's not a huge amount, given how many people, Commissioner Deluge, you mentioned the budget for the jail and others, and we've got a lot of people going through there. So the misdemeanor diversion program, which is at the discretion of state's attorney, is for first-time offenders, correct? And the adult civil citation, also, you can't have any previous criminal history? Okay. So due respect to your example, there are certainly those that have a long pattern of criminal history, may fall into a different category, but someone could be prevented from using one of those two programs if they have a DUI. Is that correct? Okay. So it's that simple. It's not robbery or anything else, but it could just be a DUI that prevents you from having access to either of these programs. And if you don't qualify for, or pay $200 to $300 to get into the medical marijuana prescription pipeline, then if you're caught, you've had a DUI 10 years ago, and you're caught with medical marijuana, and you don't have a prescription, that's a full, I mean, that can't be a misdemeanor, that is a charge on your record. Is that correct? So we have done a lot of work in the last 20, 30 years, really, maybe the last 15, to overcome some of the double standard we've had in our law enforcement. I can't say we're really, I mean, not law enforcement, in our prosecution of drugs and other types of crimes. Incremental progress, to be sure. I see us rapidly already creating a double standard here. Supervised pretrial release, we saw that come up in March or so, February, March. We have people being arrested for medical marijuana that someone else who has the capabilities to get a prescription card, it's legal for them. That doesn't seem fair to me. It doesn't seem fair that simply by virtue of a DUI, you're prevented from taking advantage of some of these programs. And we all know what a criminal record can do. I mean, let's just take that slide right there. We're talking about job creation, everything else. So this, to me, is kind of the dividing line. With respect to the state's attorney, I, and I have a great respect, and I understand US Attorney and state's attorney are both struggling with this, same way we are, or different ways, but for the same reasons. So in the item, Ms. County Administrator or attorney, I'm not sure which one, you mentioned the 11th and 17th Circuits. Those state's attorneys have agreed to go along with the ordinances passed by counties within their districts, is that right? So this item only says that several counties and cities in Florida have passed these ordinance. By my count, there was 15 as of April 2019. Are all 15 of those within those two jurisdictions? Or are there state's attorneys that cover other counties? That would be a really critical piece of this puzzle, because if we are being told that the main reason why we shouldn't move forward with an ordinance is because the state's attorney will not go along with it, then I want to know what's happening in those other counties, because you only cite two. So...
I think we could provide a clarification for you on that at this point. Andy Johnson, please, come on up.
In the hot seat, Andy, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In conducting the analysis for the agenda item, we did reach out to all the different state attorney's offices in areas of the state where either a city or county has adopted a decriminalization ordinance. The three that we heard back from were the two that you mentioned in South Florida, and also the eighth, which covers Alachua County, and they're a bit different. And Alachua County, their state attorney's office has indicated, although they have an ordinance on the books, they've handled zero cases under the ordinance because their sheriff, their sheriff's office has declined to participate in the program.
Okay. And others have, thank you, Andy, that is very helpful. Do you know, if I'm accurate, are there 15 counties and municipalities that have passed, or do you have a general sense of that number?
There are different sources that have different numbers in there. I think it's somewhere between 15 and 20, between cities and counties, yes.
But there's a, there's a good number.
There are, yep.
Okay.
And counties, how many counties?
How many counties? I would have to, somewhere on the order of about seven.
Yeah, not as many counties. Good clarification, Mr. County Administrator. Thank you, that answers that question. So where I'm coming down on this, I'll bring it in for a landing, but I think my problem here is that we have a double standard. And I truly appreciate the response that our state's attorney, Mr. Campbell, has given to our staff. I would very much like to hear what the alternative is. I am not content to live with this double standard. While we wait for state and federal rules to shake out, we are continuing to arrest people, and I think the point that was made about the educational differences, if you get arrested on campus and someone's going to a code of conduct, and you get arrested down on Lake Bradford after a football game, if you're not in school, or if you're not on campus, there is a huge double standard, and your life can be changed in that one event. So I am not content with where we are. I think it's an injustice to our community because of the problems we're seeing with the mismatched rules, and I don't know if we have any other option but to go for an ordinance and try to work with our law enforcement partners and the state's attorney. Last comment here is that I was going to, I would hope that we would invite the state's attorney to participate in that discussion before we move forward with an ordinance. It could be in the development of that, but for any other option, I'll support the substitute motion, but I would consider delaying this to hear from the state's attorney and others about a third way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Lenley, and then Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is a complicated issue, and times are changing fast, faster for some than for others. My main concern with this, the option, our second option, is that there are so many other counties within the Second Judicial Circuit, we would be relying upon the state attorney to enforce, or at least cooperate with us. And I just feel like to create civil penalties, we may be setting up something of a paper tiger. We have 26 enforcement agencies in our county. We don't have authority over how they perform, I mean, so very much, we do have to rely on the cooperation of the state attorneys and these other agencies. So while I kind of like expressing support for civil penalties, I want it to be more meaningful than to just say, we want to do this, and we hope others will go along with this. So it, to me, I mean, I do think things are changing, I hope the state and feds kind of begin to act. I know that's wishful thinking in large part, although there is a lot of movement in our community on that. So at this time, I feel like I'm not going to support the alternative for civil penalties because I just simply don't think it's going to be meaningful. I think it's going to be just... it's going to be just a statement at this point. So, that's where I would stand at this point.
All right, Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Deluge. Commissioner Proctor after Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Minor, I neglected. I called him out.
It's all good.
Right after Commissioner Maddox, my mistake.
I'll be brief. My second was squarely behind the fact, I just had a conversation with the sheriff the other day. He talked about the capacity of the jail, how close we are to capacity, and the prospects of us having to look at either building a new jail or expanding on the one that we have in order to handle the amount of traffic we're having in and out. He also spoke to the fact that we are also having more, longer stays by our inmates in our facility. Then you look at the other side of it, the side of it that absolutely takes a young man or a young woman's life earlier on in life who has less than twenty grams, and charges them with a criminal act, for the most part, all but sometimes ruining their lives. I just don't, I couldn't sit here, I do understand where you're coming from, about twenty-six agencies and all the people who are involved, and even the state attorney to that extent, not going down this road, but I still feel obligated for us to do our part. We put it out there, if they choose to respect it, they respect it. But if they don't, they don't. But I have to take the step to at least put the option out there for them to take advantage of. And so, I second the Commissioner Proctor's motion because of that, and I stand firmly behind it because of it. If it fails, my opinion won't change. It's time for us to start looking at things differently. There's a lot of stuff going on in Tallahassee, and I'll be honest with you, I just don't think twenty grams or less is the most serious thing that we got going on here, and I think we need to look at it different ways. So, because of that, I support the substitute motion, and I second the substitute motion, I stand behind the substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's get this right in this time. Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Deluge, and then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a difficult issue. I, I'm inclined to support the motion on the table as a means to having further discussion about it. I'm not opposed to decriminalizing or shifting to civil citations. The main concern I have, which is a related issue, which has not been brought up yet, is marijuana use by teens, by youth. You know, I know it's maybe a symbolic gesture right now, the state attorney basically not willing to comply with whatever we try to oppose in terms of civil citations. But, one thing I don't want to responsible, I don't want to be responsible for, as a county commissioner, I think no one here does, on increasing access among youth and teens. The CDC still says that use of marijuana by teens and youth has permanent damage, you know, to their brain development. I don't want us to be responsible for that, for that, for this being relaxed to the point where we are exposing more kids to marijuana use. All that being said, I'm willing to let the motion move forward. I think it's, I think it's worthy of us discussing at a future time when we have an ordinance in our face to consider.
All right, Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to support the motion, but let me take a nuance on this, mostly because I'd love to hear from the state attorney specifically and the sheriff. In other words, it'd be nice if we could reach out to them and say, "What would you like to have done?" Because I agree with Commissioner Minor, I'd love to continue the conversation, but I just don't want to throw it out there and say, "Let's just take it." My understanding is that twelve-hundred people are in jail today, none of them are there for just low-level marijuana. And as was pointed out earlier, it's a combination of other things, and we're never going to be able to take the discretion away. And I, nor do I want to from law enforcement. They're standing there in the moment, and they know what's going on, and they're looking at the record, and they've got to make a call. And that's not, that really gets a little bit out of our responsibility. So, I'm not going to support the motion, not that I don't see the intent, but I think if we could, if it passes, great. If it doesn't, I think maybe we could reach out to the state attorney and the sheriff, and, okay. And this is, this is a result of that. Okay. Well, then I'll stick with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, and then it looks like Commissioner Dozier, you're back in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that this is a quantum leap for the state attorney to, only forty-eight days ago, while we were on a break, July thirtieth, 2019, that he sends this incredible letter to his, incites dear law enforcement partners, that went across the Second Judicial Circuit, I imagine, and to all of the persons who are listed here as signatories on this memorandum of understanding by the twenty agencies and the police chiefs and sheriffs of all of these counties that I have before me. And I'm sure that this letter went before them. Our state attorney is not soft, is not weakling or passive in prosecuting. In fact, I would dare argue that he still overprosecutes, and that his prosecution rates exceed other jurisdictions by large doses. That's just who he is. But when he allows for his mind to stand taller than his ideology or the consensus of conservative thoughts, and he goes scientific to make these statements about now cannabis and its extracts or derivatives are legal if it has THC concentrations below three percent. The current posture is that no public or private lab in Florida can do this dispositive testing. Hemp products look and smell exactly like marijuana products. It is clear that cannabis is still illegal, and I intend to enforce the laws as written. While this has created a practical frustration, it does not appear to be insurmountable. And this is the last page in this item. It's the last paragraph that brings comfort to my efforts to make this motion. As you look at the second to the last paragraph, our state attorney, who's been down there for years, says to conclude, "This office will no longer be charging people with possession of cannabis absent a confession to what the substance is or testing by a lab that can meet the evidentiary standards I have laid out." Well, this testing ain't in Florida. The state attorney said, "We will also not be approving search warrants or other legal process based on traditional predicates where officers or their dogs and presumptive tests feel a substance is cannabis." He says, "I will not be issuing search warrants or other legal process based on traditional predicates. I know this is a significant change in the law and would caution you in making arrests when these issues are present." My question is, is the state attorney in contempt of the law? And if he is not in contempt of the law, then what we are suggesting, which is a very cognitive function, consistent with this writing that he put out to law enforcement partners on July thirtieth, we are taking a very measured step, as the state attorney is saying, he's not issuing, this is strong. Read it, please. I appreciate your listening, and I encourage you that we are not getting ahead of, we're catching up with our state attorney.
Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good discussion. I appreciate the concerns, and I wanted to circle back, Commissioner Deluge, and other, we can't decriminalize it. The language is wrong in a lot of the ordinances and other things. It's just going to civil penalties. And Commissioner Maddox, I think you really honed in on exactly the feeling that I've been having. We got to do our part. State's attorney's got his statement, this is what we can do. And given the conditions that exist state and nationally, I think we owe it to the citizens of Leon to have that option, although I am always concerned with doing, you know, work and staff time and everything else, Commissioner Linley, I think this is where you were kind of going, if it's not going to have any impact. So, Commissioner Proctor, I would love to offer just a friendly addition amendment to your motion. I would like to proceed with the drafting of the ordinance, but hear from, as Commissioner Deluge suggested, Sheriff McNeil, others, hear from them about whether or not this would be receptive and applied in their jurisdiction, hear from TCC, FAMU, FSU, have that be part of the discussion here, because we may get a lot more public involvement. And the, just drafting the ordinance doesn't mean it's done. We will have a lot more discussions. So, I think that will invite those folks to be here, and I would particularly love to hear directly from the state's attorney on if not an ordinance, what else. So, that would be my suggestion, Commissioner Proctor.
And I accept that as a very cogent step. We are all very familiar with the sheriff, the other law enforcement leader. Sheriff McNeil's view has been progressive, this ordinance would merely not get in front of him, but catch up to where his mind is about it, and our state attorney as well. So, I think it's a prudent effort. I'm hoping we can get a unanimous vote when it comes back or after we've received their input.
All right. I will say that I entrust our state attorney, and as I think Commissioner Deluge mentioned, there are twelve-hundred inmates in the Leon County detention facility, and none are there for possession of twenty grams or less, so I can support option one, but I won't be voting for option two. But with that said, we do have a motion that has been amended, and a second by Commissioner Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed?
I'm sorry. Okay, okay.
On the substitute motion, now option two.
Okay.
The original, and that's correct.
Which one?
Commissioner Maddox seconded the original.
Okay.
With the amendment from Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. I believe it passes four to three. I do want to go on record, we had some speaker cards come in after the fact, and they are welcome to stay around to the conclusion of our meeting today if they would like to comment. Mr. Administrator, our next item up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number seventeen, this agenda item provides a status report on the increased interest in the development of event venues currently prohibited in the rural zoning category, and seeks policy direction regarding whether or not the board wishes to consider allowing this type of commercial use in the rural area. You'll note, Commissioners, and you'll call from our briefings, that this item and the next are related. The board, just in terms of a brief overview, the board will recall recent deliberations, Commissioners, involving Keep It Rural, the results of which were generally to move toward even more restrictive limitations of land use in the interest of what we generally refer to as protecting the rural character in the rural zoning district. As included in the analysis of this item, the State's Right to Farm Act, Commissioners, has an agrotourism provision, which expressly allows and exempts from local regulation, regulations operating farms, emphasis added, which use existing farm facilities like barns for these event venues as a secondary use. With the growing popularity of these venues, some landowners have built, and in some cases, as is the case in the next case, are operating venues in these, in some cases newly constructed facilities, which may also otherwise not qualify under Right to Farm. The issue before you, Commissioners, from our standpoint, is simply, and as you can see, we're dealing with this in a sort of a real-time basis, is whether the board wishes, again, to further consider changing the comp plan and directing staff to develop regulatory framework to allow this activity in rural, or to continue as is, again, which is that this is a non-allowable use in the rural zoning category. With that as an overview, again, we're happy to answer any questions. Herb, of course, is also up to speed on this issue and ready to handle the next item, but from a policy standpoint, that's what the direction we're seeking from you today. And I should note that we have two speakers on this item.
If it will be the will of the board, we'll listen to the speakers, and then Commissioners. Who do we have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first speaker is Pamela Hall.
Well, good afternoon. Long time no see.
Well, you guys, you know, you've heard the hornet's nest.
Good to see.
My name is Pamela Hall. I live at 5051 Quell Valley Road. I ask you to go for option one. The staff report, I think, is pretty clear. It states that what is currently allowed under agrotourism, which fulfills the state requirement, that means that you have an existing agricultural facility, and you can rent it out occasionally for other uses. The other thing I want to remind you that what's, oh, how do I say this? What I think is being asked to be considered here is to once again reconsider what we litigated five years ago, was allowing commercial development hither and yon in the rural areas. I understand that there's arguments that, well, this will just be a small thing, they'll just be doing only a little bit, but agrotourism is defined as having an agricultural primary use. Otherwise, it's just a standalone commercial facility. I don't care how many people it sits, it's the camel's nose under the tent to say, "Well, we'll let one do a little bit," and then, you know, I don't know if I'll be here, but I'll have to come back from five years from now. I want to ask you guys to please keep it reined in. So, remember, not all of you were here when Keep It Rural came forward, but I want you to remember what we asked for. It wasn't just the gas station. It was about reconsidering the intent and purpose of the rural areas, and that they are for rural uses. They provide us not just with the pleasures of having something to look at, they are our ecosystem function. And every time we go to calculate how important that is to us, we never calculate what it costs if we lost it and we had to replace it. And you're going to say, "Oh, this is just a little hotel, a little restaurant, it's not going to matter." But to change it from being the intent of rural versus allowing commercial begins to destroy what rural is. That, this sort of commercial development is allowed in the urban fringe, it's allowed in rural communities, and I would say the rural communities would be an excellent place to really encourage it to be. They are essentially facilities that want to pretend they look like a farm. That's fine. Build a restaurant that looks like a barn, but it's a restaurant. It doesn't belong in the rural areas. I'm not quite sure why this is arising, except that I know some people have, looks like to me, abused the agricultural permits and gone ahead and built things, are now asking for your forgiveness. I hope you don't go there. I mean, the rule of law should make a difference. If there's an argument to change, then you have to come up and try to make the change of law and then proceed, not just do something illegal and ask to be forgiven. So, please, we litigated this for many months. I know I'm the only person standing here supporting it, because you know how hard it is to get folks out of the rural areas to pay attention on two weeks' notice? And frankly, as you might notice, my health hasn't been great. I can't call up everyone overnight. So, do not proceed with this. We already decided rural areas are for rural use. There's plenty of other spaces to put an event facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. I'd like it to be noted that you got twenty-five extra seconds based on the number of meetings that I haven't seen you.
Thanks.
It's good to see you again.
I do try to do that.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Linley.
One more speaker card.
I'm sorry, one more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charles Gardner.
Pam and I get along well, but we don't always agree. But we have worked well together in the past. This is one where I have to ask, what's wrong with this? There's a demand for wedding venues in Leon County. There are a limited number of them. If we have an ordinance, it'll give you the opportunity to regulate all the life safety, the public health, welfare, safety, those buzzwords, the size perhaps of the location, how far off the road. It's an opportunity to regulate, but there is a demand. I personally don't see the harm. I've got a couple clients that do these. I'm about to, well, I've written a check- I'm about to, well, I've written a check to a venue in Denver for my last daughter to get married. I'm also on the next agenda item and I'll talk more about that. But I think this is one of those things where, what's the harm? And that's, why have the people of Leon County go to Jefferson County to get married or go to Thomas or Grady County just because they want a rural setting? And so you know agriculture includes growing trees. So any piece of property where they have a ag classification because they're growing pine trees is a place where you can have agritourism and people can come walk through the trees and then as an ancillary, you could have a wedding venue out there or a venue to host meetings or whatever you want. Then you have to ask, what if people just want to get married on a piece of property and there's no building out there? They can do that. People can, you know, farm families have had weddings out on farm properties for years, going back generations. They used to bury people on the farms. Now we have regulations on cemeteries. I think this is just an opportunity to form a committee, look at it, and see if we can make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have a couple of Commissioners in queue to speak, Commissioner Lindley, then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We went, we had so much work, so much community input and went to great lengths five years ago to pass what I think is a great ordinance, the Keep It Rural ordinance, which is protecting our truly rural communities. I understand that HGTV and others are making it kind of popular to have mock barns, sort of decor and facilities set up, but out of respect to the enormous amount of work we did, and I think at that time we even talked about, there's sure to be the first, you know, sometime we're going to get someone slipping in and saying, well, what about this one thing? And I really, I really feel the distinction is true agribusiness versus strictly a commercial arrangement that's set up, that's not really agriculture, it is strictly just a commercial business. So I'm not ready to abandon Keep It Rural and even with this one tiny, perhaps tiny change at this time. So I would support option one, which is taking no further action on the Keep It Rule, or change the Keep It Rule.
Motion's been made, seconded by Commissioner Deloche. Several Commissioners in, oh, was it you? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Minor. Next up, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I first have to say that Dr. Hall, which I don't think I've ever used that phrase before, but the chairman always says it and it sounds really nice. So Pam, you made a comment to me before the meeting that you're a volunteer reopening this and the amount of hours that you and the others in the Keep It Rule group put into coming up with what was an exceptional compromise. We started with a gas station on Crump Road in Mikkasuki and we ended with something that we all felt really good about. And you all did put in your volunteer hours for that and for that, I think the entire community, whether they know it or not, should be grateful. So thank you. And you know what's about to happen because I'm going to disagree with you now. So I appreciate you a lot, but I do, I do think there is a nuance here and Ms. County Administrator, I've got a couple of questions for you. So I am in a very weird position, having looked at a whole lot of wedding venues in the last few months. So I've been on every website there is. I have looked at the wedding venues in Georgia and I'm not using anything that might be in our agenda right now, so I'll just put that out there. I will be, I will be in town, downtown, or yeah, in the vicinity. So this is not germane to me, but I have happened to go on the websites and looked at all of these. Mr. Gardner, I actually, you and I don't always agree either, but I think you do make a good point. When we've looked at places and we've talked to people, the drive time to get to other counties is a real issue. So either you're in town or you have just very limited space or you're out of town. There is a demand for this, you're right. On the other side, I will say, did you say Commissioner Lindley, we did an incredible amount of work and I don't want the camel's nose under the tent either. Pam, you've mentioned hotels and restaurants. So Ms. County Administrator, in our briefing, we talked about this category and how we might go through the exercise of looking at a carve-out for event venue space. What type of restrictions have you contemplated or are we there yet, meaning on ulterior roads? Is there any restrictions on the size of the property, on the limit of number of days, on the type of business that would be allowed in this category? Could you tell us about that?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if we were to get that direction from you tonight, we would, as we note in the analysis of the item, convene some stakeholders and have those discussions which would deal with intensity and parcel size and noise and lighting we articulate in the items, hours of operation, setbacks, et cetera, and bring that back to you. Again, if that's your direction, then that's the type of analysis we would conduct and bring back to you.
So thank you for that. To get a little more specific, you trained us well, we can't do spot zoning, see the next item, in my humble opinion. How restricted could a category like this or an opportunity like this be specific enough for event places that would restrict other types of commercial use such as restaurants, hotels, or other things like that? Do you think there is a dividing line? You just mentioned hours. Could it be three days a week, something like that? Is that something that we could look at?
I'll defer to Herb on that one. Herb?
The answer is yes.
Yeah.
I think you have that authority to do that, so.
Could we look at restrictions such as not subdividing property for the purposes of development, meaning you have an existing 10 acres or five acres and you have a desire to do an event space, but you're not coming to us wanting to subdivide that property for commercial use? Is there anything like that that we can do?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
And restrict access points, restrict the nature of, I mean, parking isn't going to always be an issue and making sure, for example, that you can't use impervious surface.
Mm-hmm.
It would have to be some form of either the cold mix or just gravel or something of that variety. So yes, I think all of those are available.
Okay. And thank you. Mr. County Administrator or Attorney, you've got a pretty tight timeline in here with a public workshop in November, all leading up to next summer. I understand that some may desire that we move quickly with this. If we looked at those issues, a recommendation from staff about how this could look before we get into the public meetings and others, would that dramatically delay the cycle? Would it move us into the 2020, the fall cycle next year, the 2021 comp cycle?
No, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, no, we, actually, while it's not indicated on that list, it was our assumption that prior to initiating any process, we'd come back to you with that, with those recommendations.
With all of those caveats that I want to be as careful as my friend Pam Hall would like us to be, even if she doesn't want me to do what I'm about to do, I'm going to make a motion to bring us back an item with a draft amendment and the implications of that for the different types of businesses and the concerns that we know exist within the Keep It Rule group.
Got option two?
I do not, well, Mr. County Administrator, you can tell me. I don't want to initiate the full process. I would, I'm making a motion to bring that item back and at that time, we decide whether or not to move forward with it. Is that acceptable?
Substitute motion.
Yes, it's a substitute motion, but it's not option two. That was Commissioner Maddox's question.
I'll second her.
Is that acceptable, Ms. County Administrator?
We understand, we understand that motion, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Nothing like, I got your second.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Nothing like Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Deloche.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not here five years ago when you worked with Dr. Pam Hall and others on the rural zoning. I've heard a lot about it since then and I respect the work that you all did. I see the economic benefit in this, but I think with all the work that you have done, looking over it, I want to retain that. I think with some of the adjacent properties, you've got problems with lights, noise, traffic, a whole host of issues in terms of that, so I would retain my support of option one.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Deloche?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, if I understand this correctly, and we've got two different issues here, we've got the one that's going to follow this, which is kind of add-on to this, but even, even trying to put this together is not going to solve that problem. We've got two different issues here. And I, I fall on, I mean, I go with staff's recommendation. I look at this and I think to myself, the Right to Farm Act pretty much allows a lot of stuff to go on and if they're already out in rural area and they're farming and they want to then do this, that's okay. Other than the one behind this, I don't know that we've had a huge line of people that are saying, we want to do this. And if there's a big call out there for this type of venue, I have a hard time seeing that, you know, that we create, I think we're just creating work. And to Pam's comment, I mean, I think there's a lot of work that got put into that and I don't want to just set that aside. Now, if we have a line of people that say, we'd like this to be considered outside of the one that's going to follow this, I might reconsider, but I just don't see a hue and cry in the community saying this is an unmet need. There are some of these event venues, we all go to them and I think they came up through the way they were supposed to and they basically were some kind of farming institution or they, even if you started something to look like a farm, effectively met the guidelines and then put this in there, you'd still be okay. So I'm going to stick with the original option one and not support substitute. Thank you.
We have Commissioner Maddox, then Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Dozier again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I think staff recommendation on this was board recommendation, was board direction, but Dr. Hall, it's not many times that I don't do what you ask me to do or disagree with you, but on this one, I'm sorry. I'm going to have to go ahead and support the substitute motion. I do believe that Commissioner Dozier makes a lot of good points. I think we can do this the right way with also giving respect to what we tried to achieve with our Keep It Rural ordinance. I think we can, we can create something here that can be beneficial to the area while also keeping the rural character that we all, we all want to keep within our rural area of Leon County. And so I'll be supporting the substitute motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, I shan't tell a lie. Commissioner Dozier tugged on my heartstrings and said that she was looking around for wedding venues and that just really messed me up. So my glasses got foggy, huh?
You're not going to second the motion?
No, I'm walking with you on that right there. And I immediately remember that my daughter's second year, I mean, first year of college, she had an epiphany and called and said, Daddy, I've decided that my wedding dress, it won't cost over $3,000. And so I was, I mean, I mean, who, what freshman calls you to say and announce that my wedding dress will not cost over $3,000? And I said that, well, Haley, I was kind of hoping that the whole thing would be right around $3,000. The dress? So empathizing with Commissioner Dozier, she's walking down, what you call that lane? Love lane, what you call it?
You don't have to call it anything, just keep going.
Okay, I want to. She's going down that blissful lane and I just felt the vibe. I mean, it just touched me. And I, it's not a lot of thought in this one right here, it's just a feeling. And I think that with where she is relative in her life to sentimental stuff, not having to drive far and, you know, I hope my daughter don't want to get married out there, you know, but just in case, I'm going to try to keep some option open. So that's why I'm supporting.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I got a clear visual. Commissioner Dozier, please.
I'm going to try to get through it. Commissioner Proctor, I never know, you know, exactly how you're going to get there to support, but hey, if we have four votes to at least have an agenda item and have another discussion, I'll be happy on this one. I just, for point of clarification, Mr. County Administrator, forgive me, it was referenced a few minutes ago, I think Commissioner Deloche, that people who have these types of businesses in the rural area met the requirements, but for a majority of the businesses that we see, Bradley's Pond, others, they were grandfathered in because they existed prior to the comp plan rules, or Lewis and some of the others, they do meet the act. So we've kind of got two.
Two different categories?
Yeah.
Those who meet Right to Farm Act and those who predated the comp plan.
Okay. And one last question I meant to ask, again, I'm concerned about the camel's nose getting under the tent, to keep using Pam's phrase, but we did discuss ecotourism five years ago. So someone who set up a spot where you can meet and do bike tours or kayak trips, we had Wilderness Way down in Woodville area for a while, is that type of business, that type of business is still restricted because it would be a commercial establishment, correct?
For this one, let me pivot to the expert here and go to Barry. Barry's on deck waiting to answer just this level of questions on what's, always very helpful to.
Trying to get Barry as a dime.
And helpful to have the former head of comprehensive planning in our BSM department now, so Barry?
Yes, we, while we did concentrate commercial uses in the rural area that were directly related to those primary agriculture, civil culture uses, two primary intersections of arterial and collector roads, obviously if you had an ecotourism use, a kayak rental or canoe rental, you'd really like to have that down at the river. So I think there's room there for those, those to be located outside of that area.
You spent a couple of years on this, so I appreciate it and glad you're here to answer questions. Thank you for Vince and for the rest. So that was a key point I wanted to circle back to, Mr. Chair, was that I remember five years ago talking about the ecotourism piece, we're looking at international mountain bike destination, other things. To me, the use in the river example is perfect. You may want to locate near a trail or near a river. There is something very unique that looks different than other commercials. So I just wanted to get that on the table, appreciate this, but it's a very small category I think we're talking about and I look forward to our next discussion if we can have one. Thanks.
All right. We have a substitute motion to come back with a draft amendment. Was seconded by Commissioner Minor? Did I get that right that time? Commissioner Proctor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, so four to three again. Motion passes. No, motion fails. Sorry. So we're back at the original motion, which was option one, except the status report on event venues in the rural zoning district. We have a motion in, we have a second.
Call a question?
Called a vote? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That would be three to four.
It passed four to three. It passed four to three. You won, Pam. You're good.
Good luck on the $3,000 figure there, Commissioner Proctor, as a side note.
Well, maybe Chris should hand that dress down or something.
Mr. Administrator.
Oh, I have number 18. I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Which one are we on now?
I have number 18. I have number 18, I move staff recommendation.
We're on item 18. We have a motion and a second. We have a speaker on item 18.
We have, I think, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have two speaker cards, and the first, Charles Gardner and Dr. Pam Hall. First speaker, Charles Gardner.
Mr. Gardner, name and address for the record, even though you've already done it once.
Before I start my three minutes, can you tell me what you just did on item 17?
So I move, I move staff recommendation, which is to authorize the county attorney to file a declaratory action.
Pardon me?
It's the permanent injunction.
Now, that's what this item is.
Yes, sir.
What did we do on item 17? Nothing.
Oh, item 17, status quo.
Status quo.
Okay, all right. Well, I don't feel very optimistic about 18, but I think there's an opportunity here to avoid what some people would refer to as a hailstorm. Right now, there are 40 mamas and daughters who have scheduled weddings in this venue. It's, we think it's a safe venue. It's been hosting weddings since April of 2018 with no incidents. At my direction, my client is not booking any more events at the site. I think this is an opportunity to sit down, avoid a lawsuit, both the expense and the time, and try to hammer out a settlement that allows these 40 events to take place as long as the health, welfare, and safety of the people attending 40. Four zero. I think it's 42. I think we can craft a settlement agreement that make sure nobody gets hurt, make sure the water's safe to drink, make sure there are plenty of bathrooms. I don't think we have any concerns about the building collapsing on people, but we can have off-duty policemen out there, we can have off-duty sheriff's deputies, firemen, whatever the county requires, but I'd like to be able to honor these 40-some-odd contracts that have been entered into, and I think that'll probably reduce the number of phone calls you guys get from, I mean, I've had four daughters get married, I know a stress level that some of you can't even imagine, but there are a lot of people that are impacted by this, and I'd like the opportunity to work it out with the county. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question for the speaker, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
What's the last day, what's the last day of the last event, the date?
I think they're booked into 2020, early 2020 spring. No more being booked, but they're, they're out there, and there are just not enough of these venues that provide other options for some of these people.
May I ask a question also?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Counselor, I hear what you're saying, you're trying to find a way to work this out, but why have your clients not tried to comply with the code violations that we've already been discussing over and over with them, which would have made them be in compliance?
We have, I've just gotten involved in the last couple of three weeks. I told my client, he may not need a lawyer, he may well need a preacher. The other option is to carve this section of Leon County out and move it to Jefferson County, but I think we can work it out. I'm a problem solver, I'm willing to give, I'm willing to make sure nobody gets hurt out there, and that should be our primary concern. So I'm willing to do what it takes to help everybody get out of this mess.
Commissioner Maddox?
Last question, thank you, Mr. Chair. When's the next event?
Probably this Saturday.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, your next speaker, Pamela Hall.
Pamela Hall, 5051 12 Valley Road. Thank you very much for the discussion and the previous vote. I agree with the attorney, and I think that's probably a relatively rare event, but I think, I mean, the folks who did this, I can understand, I've read law, it's been confusing, but the first thing you do is you call up staff and you say, "Hey, I'm trying to interpret this, what does this mean?" And staff will work with you, and when things are ambiguous, they will really work with you. So apparently, at some point, when they built this facility, they either didn't really read the state law that says pretty clearly that it can't be a standalone facility, it has to actually have, cannot be, construction of new or additional facilities that intended primarily to house, shelter, transport, or otherwise accommodate members of the general public for weddings, for parties, for whatever. So I think there's some willful ignorance going on here, which is one of the reasons why they probably now have a list of many people who would wish to have their wedding in what I suspect is a rather pleasant place. I like the rural areas, they can be quite pleasant. But this county has a large amount of land that's an urban fringe, which, I live in urban fringe, it looks just like rural in many places, and you can build facilities there. It has rural communities that have substantial fringes that don't have Woodville Highway going down them, which this would be a really good economic addition. So if the demand exists and there's locations to put it, then that's where it should go. So, I mean, I feel for the people, especially if someone is planning a wedding this Saturday, my suspicion is they've already moved it. So I just hope you guys recognize that this is a difficult situation because someone just barreled on ahead and decided to ask for forgiveness instead of seek permission, and that you do the right thing by the rule of law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a few Commissioners in line to speak. We'll have Commissioner Minor, actually, it just lit up, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner DeLuge, Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The way I see it, we have a couple of issues here. One is that because we know the violation, if we don't take action, we're then liable for anything that happens on the property, essentially. But at the same time, if there are other, if we don't enforce the law now, what do we say to folks that come after that might be found in violation of the same code that this organization is? So is there a way that we can navigate those waters to where we can protect Leon County of liability and in honor of these 40 wedding parties to go forward? I just, I don't know if there is, but is there anything that we can do to kind of find some type of middle ground to, to basically achieve what we want while still allowing these 40 scheduled parties to continue?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Attorney?
In light of your vote on item number 17?
Yep.
That this is not an allowable use, once that is determined, then everything else falls. I don't know how I work out issuing you a CO and a building permit and all of those other life safety code issues, if it's not a use that you're going to allow anyhow. So I have very little hope that there is a path to do that.
That's probably, that's the answer I was thinking you were going to give us, but I was just grasping at straws, so trying to find something. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I had to smile at that one because the solution is the previous item. So, I mean, that is, in my mind, the only way to allow a facility like this to operate in a special carve-out if they don't have the ag provision. So I will not belabor the points or invite more comments from my good colleague here, but I would be terrified if I had to break a contract right now, for sure. I feel horrible for those folks. But, Ms. Gardner, due respect to your clients, it's not just not reading or not understanding the ag provision. We don't have sprinklers in this building. There were issues with the support beams. Building a building for occupancy, everybody should know you need a building permit. So right up front, to every contractor and every person who has built a house or a business, I don't see how we can do anything else but go with option one, because this was more than willful to me. I will admit that in our briefing, County Administrator, I said that this one may look a bit different to the wider community, like, why in the world would you end a facility, shut down a facility that is so great and so many people love, I mean, I think Opening Nights was there for a little while and then pulled back, I'm not sure if because of this issue or not, but they've, others have wanted to use this facility. Obviously, they've got a good product, but you have to follow the rules. So there are life safety issues to me. Even though there hasn't been an event, if there's a fire in the building and there's no sprinklers, it is a problem for all of us. We will all be at fault for not taking a step, so I think we have to go forward and do this. In light of the previous vote, if we're not going to have a provision for people who don't also have ag on their property, the only thing it seems like the owners can do at this point is look at agricultural use for the property, if they so choose to that, and circle back later if they get that exemption from the state, Mr. County Administrator, or Mr. County Attorney, is that accurate? That would be the only way that they could operate again in the future, getting the exemption and curing all the problems with the building.
That's correct, except for one point is that they wouldn't circle back to us, they would be, they would be allowable under the state.
Under the state. But they would come back to us for a building permit outside of a barn, is that right?
No, they would, they would be exempt from all local regulations.
Well, so they don't have to have a sprinkled facility if it is, this type of facility, if they had an ag exemption, they would not be required to have sprinklers for hundreds of people under the ag exemption.
Not under our code.
Not under our code, but under state building code, they may be, okay. That's a very interesting point to me, that would be a problem for the state if they didn't require it, but I won't go down that rabbit hole, that's their problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be supporting the motion.
Commissioner DeLuge, then Commissioner Maddox, then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noticed in the write-up that the county attorney advises against some kind of compliance agreement, which is what we've been kind of batting around. I mean, I, if, you know, you can just put a finite time, the problem would be, they're going to spend an awful lot of money to come into compliance, and then we're going to tell them in April, "You're done, you can't operate anymore, and that's it, you're over." I don't know if that's unacceptable, I would, I'd love to entertain that a little bit, but I don't know that the owner's going to want to do that, because there's going to be a bunch of expense up front, and then we're going to basically tell them in April, "You're shut down." So, I mean, that's an option, but I'm not sure it's getting a lot of traction here.
Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Commissioner DeLuge, I kind of agree with you. I learned not too long ago, when you know better, you do better, and it's one of those situations where even if the landowner didn't know any better, he found out better, and now we're at this point. So what do you do? I mean, it's like you said, Commissioner DeLuge, you say, okay, I mean, because when I was asking those questions, I wanted to go down the line of saying, "It's 42 events, I'm a married man." You know, I know what kind of anguish is going to cause those folks to know that, hey, you can no longer have your event at our venue. But at the same time, like you said, I mean, we're going to ask the owner to put a heck of a lot of money into making that venue ready in a relatively short amount of time for him to be open until the end of 2020 and then no more. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any indication on this board of us changing where we were with that four-three vote before. The only thing I kind of thought of was maybe ask for reconsideration of the vote, but at the same time, I'm not going to do it, Pam, at the same time, I'm not sure it would pass. And so I hate to do it, I really do. I wish, I wish that we could have gone about this in a different way, I wish the landowner would have known a little better and did a little better, asked a few more questions prior to doing it, because now you've got this beautiful venue, because I've seen pictures of it, it is absolutely beautiful, that now would just simply have to go away. And so I have to support, this is probably one of the hardest motions I've had to make in support, because I know what it's going to do to those 42 events, but at the same time, if the prior, if Commissioner Dozier, you said it, the prior motion passed, then there's a roadmap, but given the fact that it didn't, there's no roadmap, and so I'll be supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, on the previous motion, exactly what is the effective date?
It failed.
What is the effective, effective date, is it?
Today, I guess.
So it's already in effect? I'm going to make a sexist comment, because in speaking from the man's perspective on this right here, I can't imagine what 42 men in this community got to go through and how hard it is when a daughter and their mama done decided what it's been up their daddy's money and mama's money, and to have some girls and their mama to agree on a site, 40-some, is going to be hell to pay for some men in this community. I just, ooh. And then the moderator of, moderator of Premier Baptist Church, North Florida, Georgia, is sitting in our communion today, Elder Terry Price. And Elder Price, I want you to know that I support matrimony, wherever and whenever and however you can have it, you know? In today's time, it's harder, Mr. Barber, to get people to marry, and, I mean, I don't know where you are on marriage or anything like that, but if people found a site that 40-some people, that might be the magic spot. And if that's the magic spot, because I don't know any other venue in town that got 40-some couples lined up to go, to get married, that's a major thing. Nobody, church got that many, no other thing. So what bothers me a lot, and I think Commissioner Dozier was getting at, we saw some people file a lawsuit over three trees while we were on break, and nobody spoke up for the people, their houses, neighborhood, but they showed out for some trees. And it's amazing how, and I've heard Dr. Pam multiple times talk about the culture and rural culture and the rural nature and the rural this and that, the rural character. And Tallahassee touts itself with its trees and the moss hanging down. Now, for the very characteristic that our tourist development center lifts up, people want to enjoy, so much so that they want to get married in these serene space and place, but we, though we tout it, we contradict ourselves when the most sacred moment, probably most important moment of people's lives, and they look at Tallahassee as this kind of background. I've heard Dr. Pam say this over and over, but people want to go out there for two hours, maybe three, and Elder Price of Jesus changes that water to wine, they may be out there a little longer than three hours, just depending on how good it is, but they're out there for one, you know, life, life, life memory. Why can't people get married at this place and in this venue that we say is what represents Tallahassee and Leon County so great? I think we contradict our own statements of how we brand ourselves. I think that we go against the beauty, the splendor that which nature gives in abundance to us, but we don't want anyone to get married in that splendor, in that beauty, the site can't be. I don't understand us, I just don't. So I would like to offer a substitute motion, which would be item three for board direction, and I want people to have a holistic experience. And I could imagine in saying that, and I know, Commissioner Dozier, your setting, I'm not sure what your setting will be, but it seems that the whole spectrum of beauty in the arena of brides wanting to be married. the arena of brides wanting to be married should be anyplace. It's not like a marijuana house. This is not a place of irrepute. This is a place where a preacher going to be, a priest going to be, people like that, you know? So, it's not like you get too far out of order with, with the preacher and the priest and the father and all of that. Why can't we extend to the young brides who want that right there to occur in Tallahassee? Everybody shouldn't have to go to the moon to get a wedding. Shoot. So, I wish that we would rethink in that. I heard Mr. Gardner offer, and I recognize his prowess as a skilled negotiator. Over the years, I respect, I mean, he's renowned, he's offered to lend, and I'm thinking that there's a way that, and even if we need to revisit and to rethink, and he offered to do that on item, the previous item, that this motion would give latitude to that. And even if we needed to re, to bring back 17 for, for review, relook, I can't imagine that we would deny the splendor of Leon County's beauty to be a part of a wedding background with preachers and deacons and mothers of the church and all like that standing around. I just don't get what we did wrong. And what we are doing wrong is that we're denying our own brand to be extended to the girls who grew up and think Tallahassee is really pretty. So, my motion is that we allow for a committee, including Mr. Gardner and Dr. Pam, if y'all want to eat lunch and dinner again, and some more folk, let's work this out. This is an innocent situation that we ought to have, what's that word, latitude to do. That's my motion. Get a committee together to relook at this, and even if you go back and look at the other one and rectify this and let this situation move forward.
Substitute motion is our second. Seeing none, we'll refer to option one, which was moved by Commissioner Deloze and also seconded. All those in favor signify by saying. Oh. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. All right. Before we vote, and Commissioner Maddox made the motion, who was it seconded by? All right. Commissioner Lindley and chiming in will be Commissioner Deloze prior to a vote.
Yeah. Listen, you know, our role, and as has been pointed out, this is not an easy thing, but our role is health, safety, and welfare. And if there's a well there that's designed for a single-family home and a septic tank that's designed for a single-family home, and you've got 600 people showing up and no fire, and they might be able to get into line, but in the meantime, we know, as Commissioner Mander pointed out, we know about it, and to suddenly say, well, we'll just work it out, they've got events this weekend, I have a real hard time saying, let's just figure it out. And that's, believe me, it's not an easy decision, but, but the wrath of these people is going to be aimed on us, and I want to be real clear, health, safety, and welfare of the community, those are the kind of things that are our responsibility, and so we have to look at the greater good here. So, anyway, that's all.
Seeing other commissioners in queue to speak, I will make a comment before we take a vote. It was made on the motion by Commissioner Maddox. Based on our action on the previous item, I think we have no choice, and it's an extremely dangerous litigious position for us not to vote for option one. That said, option one has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
Yes.
Unrelated subject. Commissioner Proctor was walking down the road, and I'm wondering if we, if it's even possible for us to go down. I know we just voted on item 17 to just accept the report and take no further action, but I'm wondering if the idea of putting, putting together a committee that can maybe sit down and talk about if this can even work in any capacity, what it would look like, what the, what the limitations on it would be, or anything like that would be possible between our Keep It Rural people and, and some of the property owners out that may have interest in this? If this is a road that is pointless to go down, and I'm not, I'm not trying to force it, but at the same time, I mean, I think Commissioner Dozier said it, he had, he had people who absolutely loved this venue, absolutely loved it. And, and it was, like I said, it was a beautiful venue that had some, some value to it. And so, if, if the conversation can't be had, it can't, but I'm at least wondering if, if we can't put together, like Commissioner Proctor said, a committee of folks to sit down and try, and try to talk it out. That, I mean, that was just my thought. I don't know if you want to entertain maybe a comment or two from the audience, but I just, I just, looking at this, looking at the venue, knowing the position that we're in right now with, this thing basically just goes away now, the money that was invested by that family. And I, and I understand that they probably should have asked the questions first, but it's there now. So, I mean, is it, is it at all even possible for us to have a conversation about it, or, or do we just let this thing go?
Mr. Attorney, would you like to chime in on that, if I don't put you on the spot?
Even if you were to reconsider your vote on item 17, it, it won't take place before all of these events will have taken place, or not?
I understand that part.
It's not going to fix item number 18, no matter what you do.
Yeah, my intent, that's done, that shit is settled. I'm talking about moving forward.
You could do that, but it's, I think you would need to do that under the auspices of some sort of reconsideration of your item 17 vote, because you just, you voted no.
I'll make a motion that we reconsider item number 17 and ask for a group of citizens to come together, discuss this, and bring the item back to see if there could be some kind of agreement between the folks who, who are interested in this and our Keep It Rural folks out there.
I'm going to have to ask a question here, though.
Sure, go ahead.
Was Commissioner Maddox on the prevailing side?
I was not.
It would have to come from the other side.
Then he can't make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Deloze may.
Let me take a nuance on this. I'm not asking for reconsider of 17, but in light of 17 and a lot of what 18 meant, it doesn't mean we still can't have some kind of meeting of the minds and a discussion. And then, if there's something that needs to be done, we come back and reconsider 17. How about that? It's a timing issue.
Commissioner Dozier.
It's five o'clock, and we have a number of items. The motion that failed on 17 was not to do anything other than to draft an agenda item to come back so that we could get input. So, that is exactly what we considered and talked about for a while. I would suggest we move that to discussion time or something if we want to move on, Mr. Chair. That's just my suggestion, only because we've, unless you want me to make that motion again, but I was on the failing side as well. But that is exactly what my hope was, because I see no way to not shut down Pearl in the Wild at this point because of the building issues, and their only option is going to be ag exemption in the future, should they choose to do that. So, the only way to do it is that agenda.
On point, Commissioner Lindley.
They can attempt to get the ag exemption, I think, at this point.
Yes, I just want to make sure we use the right language, not ag exemption, they're ag exempt. What we're speaking about is right to farm.
Right to farm. Excuse me.
Yes.
They could move forward with that. Also, just on the point, we don't know that there are 40 brides out there. We have no information whatsoever about these, and I have, personally have not heard from a single bride or groom on this, so I think.
I heard from that one.
I think we're getting a little bit hyperactive about that. They can take corrective action now if they, if they choose to do that and get things up to code. I mean, we've said no for the time being, but they can come back, not to us, but if they get a, through the state, and they could do that. They didn't do it.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, what I'm saying is not necessarily tied to 18. What I'm saying, I heard what Commissioner Proctor had to say, and to be honest with you, I, I see it. I mean, you're right, we do have a beautiful rural character out there that does provide some value to some venues like what we had with Pearl in the Wild. If there's a way that our Keep It Rural folks can sit down with, with folks who have interest in that, I mean, how many people out in there, Commissioner Proctor, own 10 or so acres that, you know, would be, would be ripe for something like this, if you had the right kind of infrastructure, meaning you had the parking in place, the sprinklers and everything that made the place safe? If you had that, that kind of stuff in place for, for that kind of venue to, to, to happen. I'm not trying to at all make it urban out there or anything like that, but I, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with, with seeing if, if folks can come together and sit down and have a conversation. If they can't, then they can't. But you have something going out there that was a good thing. Forty, forty events booked from now until, until the, what, spring of 2020, I would say that was successful, and we're just, you know, we're just, we're just not going to look at it all. So, I, I mean, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I mean, 18 has happened, 17 has happened. But, and if, if, if those folks look at me right now and say, Nick, you're wasting your time, there's no point in us having a conversation, then fine, let's not have the conversation. I can't, I can't make the motion for us to have the conversation anyway. But I just at least wanted to put it out there to see if you commissioners thought it had merit to even sit down and talk about this. If not, we could just move on. It's not, it's not on the agenda anyway.
Commissioner Proctor, and then we'll move on to our next item.
Well, I just checked in with Elder Price, and he indicated that is interesting about our conversation in that the majority of the people who are lining up weddings now, the majority of weddings are occurring outside of church venues. So, the trend happens, just happens to be that going to the church is not necessarily primary focus of many, many, many areas. I hate to think that Keep It Rural is against weddings. I hope y'all ain't against marriage and stuff, but I think that Commissioner Maddox's point that we have enough intelligence in our community that we can actually intelligently come up with an alternative. And the thoughts of the county attorney with regard to marriage and where a marriage can happen in Leon County is not singularly, here's the mate, it's for the county's commission to decide. If we deem people getting married out there in the rurals and the woods or Pearl, wherever they want to go, if we, we think that that's okay as a site, it's not like they, you need a hunting license to go, and it's out of deer season, and you out there shooting in the woods, these just folk want to go out there and say, I do, you know? So, I just don't see what it violates in the public policy to allow people to go stand out there in the woods and say, I do. So, what's wrong with that? I know, but we, we also could redo this if we desire.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Proctor. I think at this time, we're ready to move on to item 19 in our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 19, Commissioners, seeks your consideration of a funding request by the Housing Leadership Council. The council is requesting funding in the amount of $20,000 each from the city and the county. You'll recall, Commissioners, the tentative budget includes $5,000 from the Leadership Council. A like amount was approved in FY19. As the board will recall, the establishment of the Leadership Council was a recommendation of the City-County Affordable Housing Workgroup. The justification for their funding request is articulated in the item, and our staff, as well as Kendra Light, the Executive Director, is, are here to answer any questions you might have, but also.
Mr. Chairman, I move option one without discussion.
All right. Commissioner Proctor made the motion with a second by Commissioner Deloze. Commissioner Dozier is in queue. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm thrilled that this one's moving fast. I just want to take a minute, this has been a long time coming. I know, got a lot of folks, Amber's here from UPHS and other, so I, I am thrilled that we're here. We have made so much progress on affordable housing, and this is exactly the right posture to be in going forward. So, thank you for that. I'm glad for the new staff and everything else. I think this is a real turning point in our focus on affordable housing throughout the county and city, so thank you all very much.
All right. Seeing no other commissioners in queue to speak, at this time, we will, we have a motion on the floor as well as a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Passes. Seven zip. Next up on our agenda is item 20. Again, Commissioner Dozier did mention it, we're going to power through to get to, I believe, item 24 is the last item on our general business.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. A break tonight would be very helpful. So, depending on the level of conversation, I was going to ask if we could look at the committee appointments at least before we break, but it may go quick on the next couple items. I just, if we need to say some proactive meeting, which, if you.
We'll do our best to get out of here by 5:30 prior to our public hearing at 6:00. Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this one can be very quick. It seeks your renewal of an existing maintenance and support agreement for our existing CAD system.
Moved by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Deloze. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion passes. Item 21, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I've briefed you all extensively on this item, but it seeks your acceptance of a status update on the landfill closure project, an authorization to mutually terminate the landfill closure constructive, construction agreement with Commandco Environmental Corporation, and the authorization to rebid the landfill closure, construction, design modifications.
Move options one and two, Mr. Chairman.
Option one by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by, oh, one and two, I'm sorry, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Item 22, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings you to Board approval of appointments for the LCRDA and as recommended by the LCRDA Nominating Committee, which are reflected in option one, A and B.
Motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Dozier to speak prior to the vote. That's option one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. County Administrator, I thank you and the Nominating Committee for the good work, and I would be remiss if I did not say that our Executive Director, Ron Miller, is in the audience. And if you get an invitation to the ribbon coating at Innovation Park's new office that in, has also lab space that is now occupied by a tenant, I really encourage you to come. It is phenomenal. Ron's been doing a great job, and we would all love for you to see the good work that's been happening at the park in October. Correct, Ron? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We also have in queue Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chair, what, what background would Mr. Graham be representing? What would, what would his, his background category of representation be?
Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Graham, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, works with the Seminole Boosters Association and their real estate division, and is, brings a wealth of knowledge in the real estate development arena. And again, I believe from the Nominating Committee, that was the, the basis for their recommendation.
Okay. I, I just was curious about that and, and thinking a little broader was, I know that his activities in that area with respect to the, the new gateway, the amassing of properties there, the new gateway and the new road for Florida State, and whether or not his being on this particular board posed a potential conflict or something like that. That's why I was raising this issue up to note, had that issue been vetted by this committee. And I may not be having all the right words, but the spirit of it is that Mr. Graham has worked in the area with property acquisition, and I'm not sure what advantage or disadvantage are that the Leon County Research and Development would be influenced by his presence on that board. That's why I looked that up.
Mr. Administrator.
Just, and Herb can certainly add on to this, but just as a public entity, to the extent that any conflict did exist, of course, Mr. Graham would have to publicly disclose that before the LCRDA and abstain from, from any voting, but beyond that, that's pretty much the extent of the conversation.
I, on Mr. Graham, there was a lot of discussion at the Innovation Park Board about having multiple. multiple FSU or FAMU reps. Our FAMU rep and TCC rep were in the room at that time. That's a little outside of direct conflicts, but it's, it was acknowledged by the full board. We talked through it, and the relationship with our higher ed partners has never been better. So I, I hope that helps clarify things, but it was supported by the full board, and they were not endorsing Mr. Graham, but Mr. Miller brought it forward because it needed to be kind of aired, our, our higher ed partners, before we went into the nominating committee. So it was discussed. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah. I, I just think that there should not be an imbalance or an unfair advantage to Florida State as a dominant among those persons in, on this committee or on this board, in that I do know Mr. Graham's activities, as I know him, is that of property acquisition. So-
It is not an unfair advantage at all.
Yeah. Wanted to be sure that that's not what we're setting up here.
Commissioner Minor has a comment, and then we'll move on to-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I heard it correctly, the motion was for option one?
Option one.
I wanted to, okay, because option two is required as part of the resolution adopted. Okay.
All right. Moving on to our next item. No, we didn't vote. Option one and two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks full board consideration of the appointments of citizens to career source, as well as a board representative, or rather, I'm sorry, citizens to serve on COCA. And we present for your consideration the eligible applicants in options one and two.
Motion for option one and two, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Seeing no, seeing no Commissioners in queue to speak.
I'm gonna get after it.
Okay. You'd like to speak after. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes. Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chair, I would like to notify the board of my resignation from the COCA board, but ask that the board appoint another Commissioner if that's okay.
I'm sorry?
Resigning from the COCA board.
Another Commissioner on COCA?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a full board appointment, Mr. Chair. If I can make a recommendation, I think she's been close, there's no other Commissioners that jump out there. I think she's been close to the process, and I've had some comments in the past, and I'd like to nominate Commissioner Dozier to do it.
As a second board member on COCA. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Welcome, Commissioner Dozier. Next up, we have agenda item number twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, that brings us to the always popular canvassing board discussion. The item presents for your consideration, one Commissioner to serve as a substitute member, and for the chairman to appoint one Commissioner to serve as the alternate member. Options one and two reflect the eligible Commissioners for both.
Mr. Chairman, question. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, question.
Yes.
County attorney, is this like being a judge or something, that you just, you know, in the election of twenty-two, when you come, you can't campaign, you can't wear a t-shirt, you can't do anything? All of that. All of that. Okay. Commissioners, please note that I'm, I wouldn't be able to adhere to expectations of being moved and silent in next year's election. So I couldn't serve.
All right. So I think Commissioner Proctor is saying he couldn't.
Couldn't.
Is that correct? All right. Commissioner Maddox, I believe, is in the original queue? Is that correct, in the, in the motion? Can you serve previously?
I did, Mr. Chair, and if you, if you need me to, I'll, I'll serve again. I've become somewhat of a resident professional.
Okay. Well, I think that would be-
I still have to ask you whatever it is you need me.
Yeah. So what we do at this point, we would do option one to appoint Commissioner Maddox, and then option two would be me appointing. At this time, the chairman would like to entertain volunteers.
For an alternate?
As an alternate, yes.
Very eligible.
So I think option, what we'll go with is option one, that would reappoint Commissioner Maddox, all of his long hours that he spent at the canvassing board this past election, and as an alternate in option two, Commissioner Lindley has graciously volunteered. All right. We have a motion and a sec. I don't think I can make the motion. Let's see. A motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Minor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Want to draw your attention to a replacement item. We have about twelve minutes to look at item twenty-eight, I believe, is it?
Item number twenty-eight, Mr. Chairman. Again, as you mentioned, this, this is an add-on item, Commissioners. It provides a status report to you on the newly constructed temporary community space and park at the northwest corner of Orange Avenue and Meridian Street, and seeks your acceptance of some operating guidelines. We did want to make sure that we brought this to your attention tonight, as you have a ribbon cutting on Friday, and we know that this park is of, of great interest to a lot of you. It's a little bit unique. Obviously, it's a temporary park. The land is owned by the county, but will become a permanent blueprint project operated by the city when that project comes online. However, Commissioners, did want to let you know that because the park is unique, we needed to get the appropriate operating rules and procedures in place so that the community gets the maximum benefit of the park. For example, under our existing county policies, which, which apply to all county parks, we prohibit profit, for-profit activities at those parks. However, when we had community meetings, something that the community said that they very much wanted was the ability to have food there and buy food there. And so our operating guidelines allow for the sale of food, allow for the sale of arts and crafts. It allows for the sale of, for example, household goods, but on one day, on Saturdays, and we, as we would create sort of a market day there to provide for those opportunities. However, because of previous activities on that site, we think it prudent to also ensure that we don't have other things occurring on the property, like, you know, services, oil changes, car detailing, that sort of things, which, which may not be appropriate for the site. Also, no permanent fixtures or anything like that on the facilities, but those things would, in accordance with these guidelines, have to be broken down and only operate during regular operating hours. Again, I bring this to your attention, again, Commissioners, just in our efforts to try to facilitate all the good we can and everything that the community wants on this site, acknowledging, however, that there are, will be park guidelines and rules that will take place upon its opening on Friday. And with that, again, we're just asking, asking that you accept our recommendations.
Before I recognize Commissioners to speak, just compliment staff, as well as, I believe, Blueprint, that has done a phenomenal job of transforming that corner and made a facelift that is something we should be proud of. If you haven't had the chance to go by there, I encourage you to visit it real soon. Commissioner Proctor, and then Commissioner Maddox, and then-
I want to thank the staff for their transformation of the site, their listening, their expeditious response. Hopefully, as the county administrator said, the hope for good wholesome constructive activity will emanate and be fostered at this site, and that the venue will come to represent multiple positive human engagements. So I'm excited about what has occurred. I think that you did a great job, Vince, Alan, Ben, other, other players. So that being said, I recognize that if the park is officially being opened in ribbon cutting on Friday, that it should open and be not just left out there, but what Vince is saying, we want to adopt it and put it under the canopy of rules and regulations as applicable to other parks, recognizing that it would not be a standalone exempted from, you know, on the wild side, that I would therefore offer option one.
My Commissioners took themselves out of queue. Option one has been approved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, I believe we've reached the end of our regular agenda. Do we have any non-agenda speakers serve?
I have one speaker card. Melissa Villar. Villar.
Villar. Name and address for our record.
Oh, there she is.
So if we don't, didn't have to wait till six P.M.
We have a call.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Is that, would that be Philip Hess?
Philip Hess. He has left the building.
Okay.
So I was going to speak, and, but we also have someone in the hallway, Josephine, that if, instead, if we don't have to wait till the six P.M. times, then I'd make him go grab her as well.
Okay. I've just got, I had just Philip Hess. I had a note that, that he had gone, and then other than that, I just have your card.
So, so what we wanted to also, and thank you for-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but for the record, we, you have to do name and address.
Oh, okay. Yes. Melissa Villar with, at one-six-nine Sinclair. And so I, I just want to be certain with the, the motion that passed earlier about the adult civil citation, civil fines. So that was an option two to move for draft ordinance and include the stakeholders, basically. And, and so another thing that we, the draft ordinance that we had given staff is that it also included, you know, the, the ability to not expend funds, just as the federal government memorandum had done, to not expend funds on, for law enforcement purposes of cannabis, you know, of, of law enforcement, for resources, law enforcement resources to arrest and to prosecute. So that, that is another motion, issue that we wanted to put forth, another way of also dealing with, with the crossover hemp cannabis, because I have a meeting with Chair Renner tomorrow as well with the House Judiciary Committee to talk about, because we do need to remove the drug paraphernalia from the, from the statute, from chapter eight-nine-three, because it does, it is a crossover with hemp. So, and then in statute, medical marijuana, it says, medical marijuana patients may purchase devices from any, any location. So they, you can, you can purchase products for using medical marijuana flower from tobacco shops. And also, since I'm able, you're granting me this time, as the holistic cannabis community, as the 501(c)(3), you know, we are, I just wanted to stress again, you know, I wanted to be included with the community human service partnerships as a line item or through grant funding to reinvest back in communities, because it is very important to reinvest back into the communities. Through evidence-based practices and statistics, it does show that through access, violent crime and property crime and teenage use goes down. So these, these are evidentiary facts, and we just want to be included in funding discussions to give back to the communities that have been most impacted by prohibition. And I know Josephine is in the hall, and she would like to speak. If it's an opportunity to do it before six P.M. as well, I can grab her.
All right. Thank you. Next up?
David Furman.
Sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is David Furman. Address twenty-twenty-four Longview Drive, Alhazza, Florida. I wanted to talk about the Harbingwood Drainage Facility in regards to my property and the potential of other properties being subjected to get damaged from water. I have found more evidence after May, that was the last study and conclusions, that under my property is being growing the, the hole in underneath the house. I don't, I don't think it's a sinkhole, but I know it is due to the water, excess water after the rains that caused the problem after the fact of the sinkholes opening. So I have, the, I haven't gotten insurance coverage, got denied, and I have felt that I wanted to encourage you to revisit the decisions on redeem the place unsafe or starting the options, because selling the house to somebody who's going to come and face the same problem, I don't think is ethical on my, you know, my own opinion. And, yeah, that's what I wanted to bring up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Josephine Canello Creel.
Hello. Thank you. My name's Josephine Canello Creel. I'm a licensed clinical social worker since, for over thirty years. My background is in substance abuse therapy, as well as in hospice medical social work. As recently as five years ago, everyone who consumed cannabis was a criminal under Florida law. That means that there are great numbers of people who can now legally use cannabis for symptom control, who have previous cannabis possession charges. It also means that there are countless numbers of people who have to continue to use cannabis as criminals, simply because they don't have the financial resources to become a legal medical patient, and yet, they too use cannabis to manage symptoms and treat diseases. Cannabis laws are changing more rapidly than any other law. Selective enforcement. Selective enforcement in law means, or occurs, when government officials, such as police officers, prosecutors, or regulators, exercise enforcement discretion, which is the power to choose whether or how to punish a person who has violated the law. What happens with selective enforcement? Well, someone who looks like me is very likely not going to get arrested for a minor cannabis possession charge, but not everyone looks like me. Cannabis laws will continue to evolve. Responsible adult use is an inevitability. Are we really going to continue to negatively impact people's lives for possession of a plant that has been shown to ease the suffering of great numbers of people? Four thousand new medical cannabis patient ID cards are approved each and every week in the state of Florida. What we've set up is a system where quite literally, one day, a person is a criminal, and the very next day, they are not, for participating in exactly the same behavior, for using exactly the same substance. Cannabis users are criminals only because of archaic, prohibitionist, and draconian laws. Society evolves and laws change. Thank goodness they do, otherwise, the members of this commission with a skin color different than mine would otherwise not be seated in this gallery and hold the esteemed position of county commissioner. While we're in the midst of these- While we are in the midst of these massive societal shifts, it's our government's responsibility to protect the people they have been elected to represent. We're placing undue burdens on our citizens. Selective enforcement is unconstitutional. All citizens of a state deserve to be treated equally. Anything else is a discriminatory practice. I respectfully request that no dollars be budgeted toward arresting our citizens for using a plant that has never killed anyone in the history of all of history. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This will be our last speaker, with great respect to the other folks that have turned in cards. We have a break. We will resume our public hearing at six o'clock. Who do we have next, Mr. Administrator?
Dr. Holyfield.
Let me make sure I clarify. If you've turned in a public speaker card, there will be a portion during our public hearing afterwards where you would be allowed to share comments. Dr. Holyfield.
As if the Tallahassee Democrat wasn't bad enough. What on earth is going on at Tallahassee Memorial Hospital? You have given TMH millions over the years. It's a city-owned hospital. Mark O'Brien makes more than a million dollars a year. That hospital has received two successive D-ratings so far as patient safety is concerned. Think about that, two successive D-ratings. And if you check into a hospital with a D-rating like Tallahassee Memorial, you have a higher risk of dying dying compared to a hospital with an A-rating for patient safety, according to Leupold, a hospital by comparison such as Mayo Clinic. And it seems like you people aren't even, maybe you just don't care about these medical issues that still exist. Last time I checked, Leon County had more than forty-seven thousand people with no health insurance, but y'all don't talk about it. Infomortality, it never went away, but y'all don't talk about it. Maternal mortality. For every, for every one hundred white women who die in childbirth, in Leon County, two hundred black women die. But you don't know about it. Tallahassee Democrat doesn't say anything about it. Y'all don't discuss it. You look at their board of directors, all this with black infomortality. They don't have a single black woman on their board, their twenty-member board, not one black woman on a twenty-member board of directors. They got seven white women on the board, not one black woman. And they recently, when Laurie Dozier came off the board, what did they do? They turned around and put his wife on the board, Kelly Dozier. And then they put some Sally Bradshaw, who apparently opposes affirmative action, they put her on the board. Well, no black woman on the board of Tallahassee Memorial Hospital.
Thank you, Dr. Holyfield.
It's a city-owned hospital.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
And y'all need to do something about it.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we will adjourn our regularly scheduled meeting. We will return at six o'clock on the dot for our budget meeting. Got a motion? All right, second. Meeting adjourned.